We will have first a public hearing, at which time you'll be able to state any concerns you have with the items on the agenda as they're called. And I would, we don't have a big crowd tonight, but one thing I always ask is that, is that you be, listen to the comments that your neighbors make. If your, if your concern is the same as theirs, don't restate it because we, we take into consideration everything that, that is said and, and this, this body of citizens listens very carefully to, to what you say because we're all concerned about the way our city grows. Um, I'm Janet Watson and I'd like to introduce the other members of the committee, starting on the end. Les?
Hello, I'm Les Tilery.
I'm Carlos Matthews.
Steve Strickland.
Kelly Scrimsher.
Ben Stickens.
Janet Watson.
Kyle Collins.
Peggy Richard.
Kimberly Battle.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant Hunsell, Police Department.
Gary Whitley.
Jim McGuffey, City Planning.
We, also behind us is Claudia Anderson. She's City Attorney's Office and she will make sure that we are doing the meeting properly and if, if we come up with any problems with that, she always will let us know. So, um, that being said, I will ask if everyone has had a chance to read the meetings of last month's meeting. The minutes, I'm sorry, the minutes of last month. Okay, any corrections or additions? All in favor of adoption of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are adopted. Um, public hearings, as I said, we, we will have this time that you may come and speak about your concerns about the items on the agenda. When, uh, go to one of the microphones on either side of the room and state your name and address for the record and then we'll hear your comment. Our first item is Cambridge subdivision Phase Two. It's been withdrawn, but if you came here tonight regarding that subdivision, we would hear your comments at this time. Okay. I hear no comments on that subdivision. We will leave that open on the agenda and, and the event that it comes back, public hearings will be continued. Um, item two, Albert Rutter subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Albert Rutter subdivision? Hearing no comment, that public hearing is closed. Item three, Heritage Estates Phase Two. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Heritage Estates Phase Two? Hearing no comment, public hearings closed. Item four, Milron at Hampton Cove, a re-subdivision of Lot Four of Sunbelt North and a re-subdivision of tract A5 of Hampton subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Milron at Hampton Cove? Hearing no comment, public hearings closed. Item five, Nature's Cove Phase Three, formerly Nature's Trail. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Nature's Cove? Hearing no comment, public hearings closed. Item six, Overton subdivision. Is there anyone here regarding Overton subdivision? Yes, sir. Would you go to the microphone?
I'm Bill Ryan, live at 175 Beaufort Drive. Uh, there's kind of a nat- a natural watershed off of the mountain there, Green Mountain, that comes down through Gardner Maples Field, runs across the ditch and comes out right at my driveway. Uh, it flows in, if part of it flows in and gets really bad, it'll flow into where the Overton subdivision is and it lays kind of wet there. The farmer has trouble farming it. Uh, I just wonder if they're going to build that up with land and are they considering that that may force water into my property?
Um, I expect we have an engineer here, a designer on that subdivision. Is there an engineer here for Overton subdivision? Uh, do you have, do you have any further questions on it? We'll address that in just a moment.
No.
Is that, that's your question? Michael, is there someone from the city that can go over that, the, the water flow?
Is before you for layout approval, it's just the concept?
Oh, we don't have that, okay.
Preliminary approval, they'll have a set of drawings.
Okay, and we'll have another public hearing at that time? Okay. That's, uh, you will get a notice when the next public hearing comes up. At that time, the engineering design will be ready that will, will show the, the way that water will flow and we'll have the engineer, if you'll come back then, we'll, we'll have the engineer talk to you or you can contact him in the meantime to get that information. Is there any further comment on Overton subdivision? Yes, sir.
Alan, sorry, what Mr. Ryan just said. I'm sixty-eight years old. I've been there all my life in Beaufort Drive and as far as I'm concerned-
Sir, would you give your exact address on Beaufort Drive?
Two ninety-nine.
Thank you.
That's, I've been there all my life. And as far as I'm concerned, on the driest day in the year, you can go out there and still cut down in the mud. And I would just like to see how they, the engineer would confirm that that will perk and will be billable. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. They will have drainage, drainage plans when it comes for preliminary and, and I would also ask you to come back for public hearing at, at that time so that you get a chance to look at those in detail and have the engineer of record explain that to you, hopefully to your satisfaction. So, and I would comment too, that, that before we give preliminary, layout approval is just what it says, layout approval, but before we give preliminary approval that will allow construction of, of streets and drainage, all of those plans are reviewed by the City Engineering Department and, and several other departments within the city to make sure that they're in compliance and, and will work. But, but it is appropriate for you to speak with the engineer at, at the public meeting if, if you come back when we, when you get the next notice. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding Overton subdivision? Hearing no further comment, the public hearings closed. Item seven, Packard subdivision Phase Two has been withdrawn, but is there, was there anyone who came tonight to speak with regard to Packard subdivision? Okay, hearing no comment, we'll, we'll leave that item on the agenda, but, um, there will be, that, if that comes back, you'll have a chance for further comment at that time. Item eight, Watercrest Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Watercrest Phase Two B and a re-subdivision of parcel three of Watercrest Phase Two, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Watercrest Phase Two, Watercrest Phase Two B and a re-subdivision of parcel three of Watercrest? Hearing no comment, that public hearing is closed. Our next item is location, character and extent.
Chair, can we add subdivision to the public hearing list? Was it on the list for public hearing?
Olive Chase subdivision? I'm sorry.
If it's not on the list, we need to add a subdivision that should have been on the list for public hearing. It's Olive Chase subdivision?
Olive Chase.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's, let's go back and add as item, okay. Item, I'm not going to change the number of this. I'm going to call that item eight A, um, which is probably not proper, but that's what I'm going to call it, so I don't have to change all these other numbers. Uh, the, um, Olive Crest, Olive Chase, a re-subdivision of lots one and two of McComb Acres and a re-subdivision of lot six, of a re-subdivision of lot four, of a re-subdivision of lot three of McComb Acres. Is there anyone here to comment on Olive Chase? Yes, sir. Would you go to the microphone and give your name and address, please?
My name is Matt Harrison. I'm actually a lawyer representing a property owner who's trying to develop this, this Olive Chase subdivision as a residential subdivision. Uh, for the record, I do reside at 1001 Clearmont Drive in Huntsville and I represent the property owner of the property in question, Matt and Amy Turner. Amy is here today. Uh, Matt and Amy Turner own a small tract of land that is, that runs along Blevins Gap Road and also abuts Grissom High School, the present location of Grissom High School. The northeast boundary line, I guess is the best way to describe that. Uh, the question here is what's perceived as a waiver that was presently before the subdivision committee last week that I know was heard, with a requirement to make a five-foot sidewalk. There presently exists a four-foot sidewalk and continues along, along Blevins Gap Road as it exits Grissom High School and runs along down the street. My client's property, it consists of approximately four hundred and ten feet past, or runs four hundred and ten feet past the edge of the Grissom High School property, to kind of orient yourself. Uh, the subdivision committee, I believe, was trying to require my clients to essentially remove the existing four-foot sidewalk and replace it with a five-foot wide sidewalk, citing a couple of sections of the subdivision regulations, specifically 4.6 sub two, which contains a table and sets forth the requirements of a residential subdivision as long, along with a local street, which we would fall within the parameters of, to be a four-foot wide sidewalk. Uh, there was some discussion of whether or not there was an optional requirement that could be made to increase to five. Uh, I, I would argue that that's not a correct interpretation and would submit that to you. Also cited was section 4.2 sub four after the meeting, which is actually under the blocks component of a subdivision requirement, which requires a minimum of five feet of a sidewalk to be constructed across blocks. My client's subdivision is a single street. It's going to consist of six residential lots and so that really does not create a new subdivision block. Moreover, the adjacent property, as you go further into the neighborhood, it consists of other residential homes that were constructed within the last few years, most recently, I believe, two years ago, and they installed a four-foot sidewalk. So, our concerns obviously are if we're required to remove the four-foot sidewalk that's presently there and serviceable and replace that with a five-foot sidewalk, the cost would be fairly extreme. We estimate that it costs to be fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars to both remove, obviously having to deal with the concrete and then install the new five-foot sidewalk per that requirement. Also, the inconsistency and the safety hazard that would be caused if you have a five-foot sidewalk and all of a sudden it shrinks to four foot, a four-foot wide sidewalk as you go from one property line to the other, that certainly could be a safety consideration and not prove to be consistent with the surrounding development. Uh, you know, I think a lot of the subdivision committee's comments at their meeting last week surrounded the anticipation and perceived development of the Grissom High School property once Grissom moves to the new location and obviously the plans have been discussed for a city complex. We would submit to the commission that any, the activities that would be spawned by that new development, that new use of the property, would, if anything, be less than the pedestrian requirements required of Grissom High School with the students coming and going from school on a daily basis. Uh, I think that's a very reasonable suggestion and I hope that y'all, that you will consider that as well. Uh, in conclusion, my clients, Matt and Amy Turner, are essentially individuals. Uh, they are not professional developers. They've hired a, a contractor to assist them with the development, but they don't do this, they don't do this for their livelihood. They're going to develop six lots, one of which they will use as their primary residence. So, this is certainly, please distinguish this from perhaps other developments that you consider, given their personal involvement in it and they plan to raise their children in the home. Uh, I, I think it's, it's fairly unfair to require the Turners to pay the additional expense to improve that sidewalk from four to five feet when there really won't be any benefit realized by the neighborhood and by the city and that the adjoining properties have five foot, four-foot wide sidewalks. Essentially, that transition from four to five would be a safety consideration as well as essentially passing the expense to the Turner family. We respectfully submit these requests to you. We have pictures that Matt Turner, who's not able to be here, put together by way of a PowerPoint presentation, which shows the existing sidewalk that's there being four feet with, Amy, if you don't mind, maybe we could pass that up. Uh, and as well as how the sidewalk goes down the roads to show the consistency of that. We appreciate your consideration.
Uh, Mr. Harrison, may, you've, you've given us a, a really in-depth look at, at, at the situation there, but I, you might have stated and I might have just missed it. What is the length of the sidewalk that they would be required to-
Yes, ma'am.
-remove and reconstruct?
Madam Chair.
And that's two different lengths, as I understand it. One for the removal of the sidewalk which is existing and the construction of the sidewalk would be without the street that they're cutting into the property.
Right.
Can you give us those numbers?
Yes, ma'am. And I can defer to the, to the project engineer, Greg Richard, for that confirmation, but the, the existing sidewalk measures four hundred and ten feet approximately in length and it covers the entire span of the property, so the replacement sidewalk, that is, that is a proposed requirement, would also be four hundred and ten feet in length. Is that correct, Greg?
What about this? Isn't there a street that cuts into the middle of the property that wouldn't require the sidewalk? How wide is the street?
That's true. Greg?
The existing driveways there, that the sidewalk's not on right now, so it's roughly, it's roughly four hundred and ten feet, four hundred and ten feet.
Okay, okay. So, there's, are all of the lots going to front on Blevins Gap Road?
No, ma'am. There is a cul-de-sac street.
Yes, the cul-de-sac street-
Yes, ma'am.
-will be taken out of the reconstruction of the sidewalk, correct?
That's, that's correct, yes, ma'am. But as the property presently exists, there's two points of ingress and egress to service a, an old minisory school. Those will be removed and of course there will be, I guess, a gap of the new sidewalk, which would be what's called Marshall, uh, Amy, what's the name of that? It's named after her son. Marshall, Marshall Run. You know, Mom will remember that, which is, Greg, how wide is Marshall Run going to be? Twenty-six feet in width would be the, the width of the cul-de-sac street. And that, you, you, Greg, are you estimating four hundred and ten feet even with that takeout of the, of the street? Okay. I think that's about as close as we can get, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there, um, is, do you have anything else for us, Mr. Harrison?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding Olive Chase? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Uh, item nine, uh, is location, character and extent, part A, Spaces Sculpture Trail. Is there anyone here to speak regarding that? Yes, please.
Good evening, I'm Amy Mayfield and I live at 901 Cragmont Road and I'm here representing the Arts Council. You all have a copy of the presentation for the proposed sculptures for the downtown square. They're all the same as what we looked at last week, but I did want to call your attention to the piece on East Side Square. We, our artist has a health condition and is unable to bring the piece down, so we had to find a substitution.
Okay, is there any, do you have some further comment for us, Amy?
No, I just wanted to make y'all aware of that update.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak regarding Spaces Sculpture Trail? Oh, Ms. Reed.
Are you on number nine, location and character?
We're on number nine A.
Okay, no, I'm waiting for C.
Okay. I'll look for you when we get there.
I'll be here.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak regarding Spaces Sculpture Trail? Hearing no further comment, the public hearings closed. Uh, item B, Huntsville High School Freshman Academy Phase Three C signs. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Huntsville High School Freshman Academy signs? Hearing no comment, the public hearings closed. Uh, item C, Huntsville Hospital Utility Bridge Phase Two. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Huntsville Hospital Utility Bridge Phase Two? Ms. Reed?
Uh, Jackie Reed, 1008 Bob Wallace. I got two addresses. I live in two places in this city. Who's the developer?
I'm sorry, I, Jim, can you tell us?
I'm on the lottery.
Okay.
Who? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, is that, you have anything further, Ms. Reed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else here to speak regarding the Huntsville Hospital Utility Bridge? Hearing no further comment, the public hearings closed. Item ten is zoning. Uh, A, item A is Sanctuary Cove Four rezoning. Ashley, would you give us the information on that?
The proposed rezoning is approximately ninety-one point three four acres. It's located on the south side of Taylor Road and south of Terry Drake Road. The property owner would like to request that the prop, that their property be rezoned to Residence R1A. The current zoning is Residence R2 here in the yellow and also the current zoning for a smaller portion is R2B and they would like to rezon both areas so that they are consistent. And they also will include the same type of residential uses.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Sanctuary Cove Four rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item B is Heritage rezoning. Ashley? Ashley, would you? Oh, you are, okay.
This property is located on the north side of Governor's Drive and on the south side of St. Clair Avenue. The current zoning is Medical District. The property owner would like to request that their property be rezoned to General Business C3 District so that they may maximize the land use options that are available. And the property is approximately two point eight zero acres and it's located here in the red hatch, in the red rectangular area.
And, and if I understand it correctly, that's where the old, oh, Southern ones-
Southern, yes.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone here to speak regarding Heritage rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item C, Providence Plan Development Amendment. Lisa.
Yes, this is an amendment to the Providence Plan Development. The developers have requested some addition of some permitted uses to the development and just to refresh your memory. Let's see. Well, we'll just look at it sideways. Here we are. All right. This street that you see here, this is Providence Main Street. This is Old Monrovia Road. And as you remember, Providence is developed under form-based codes. They have different transects, which are in a sense like small zoning districts that restrict and regulate the uses. The purple that you see here is transect one, this is permanent open space. The area that you see here is transect six and there's also a small area of transect six here. Transect six is in essence their downtown. It's the highest density they have. It's primarily commercial in use. Transect five, which you see here and in these small areas here, that is also primarily commercial in use. It's another high-density district. Transect four, which is in yellow, is their highest-density residential district with limited commercial uses. Um, in the highest-density residential district, you can have anywhere from single-family detached homes to apartments. The blue areas that you see here are the civic areas. Those are your public areas and includes Providence School. And transect three, which is the green areas that you see here, is low-density residential district. That's your single-family detached homes.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Providence Plan Development Amendment?
Yeah, I have a list of the permitted uses here.
Oh, okay.
Um, these are the ones that they would like to add. To the transects four, five and six, that would be the assisted living facilities, including but not limited to memory care, nursing homes and other aging-in-place facilities. Uh, transects five and six, again, those are their commercial, primarily commercial in nature. Banquet halls, banquet establishments and meeting places when incorporated in multi-story building, special events retailers, mobile food vending units subject to the following regulations. And those regulations mirror the currently adopt, the recently adopted mobile food vending unit regulations that we have in the zoning ordinance now. Uh, street vendors, including food kiosk on private property. These mirror a lot of the regulations under the mobile food vending units. Um, there are also some additional restrictions on what they can sell from those street vending units. We also have in transects five, six and civic, outdoor retail sales, including but not limited to Christmas tree sales, farmers' markets and art shows, car shows, outdoor performances of music plays, festivals and movies in parks, amphitheaters and other common areas. Within transect six, an inventory storage facility, and you can see the definition of that there, there's currently one on the premises. Uh, within civic, carnivals by special exceptions. And then within all transects, community gardens in common areas. And when a plan development is initially submitted, they have to provide a list of uses that they want to allow in that plan development and those are adopted as part of the plan development process. Whenever they want to add uses, they have to come back before the Planning Commission and City Council because that's considered a major change. So, that's why you see this here tonight.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Would you give us your name and address?
Yes, good evening. My name is Jeff Stewart. I live at Forbit Battery Street in the Providence neighborhood. If you could put the map back up there, please. I'm against the addition of some of the permitted uses based on the fact that if you look at the, I guess, the red square in the middle there, right in there, that's listed as transect five, which, um, is available for assisted living, food vendors, food trucks, um, food kiosks, street vendors. That is a park surrounded by houses. You can see that the yellow area is transect four. Those are all, all houses. That park area is about fifty yards by twenty yards, maybe forty yards wide and I don't agree with and object to the possibility of having food trucks ringing that park in front of people's houses. And it says here that those possible hours for those, uh, street vendors are up to 2:00 a.m. Thursday through Sunday. I wouldn't want a street vendor parked in front of my house till 2:00 a.m. every weekend. So, that's my major objection to it.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone here, anyone else here to speak regarding the changes to Providence Plan Development?
My name's Jim Skinner, Forbit X Street. And, um, when the, I guess, maybe about six months ago or so, we, Providence became an entertainment district and leading up to that time, we had a meeting with Mr. Culver, also with the police department and with the Sliman, Mr. Sliman. And, um, at that time, you know, we, a lot of the residents expressed a little bit of concern about it and they said, they, they kind of assured us that it wasn't going to be till 2:00 a.m. in the morning, that we were going to have some different restrictions than would be downtown. And there was a general understanding by the, by the residents and it wasn't, I guess it wasn't expressed exactly, but that there would be increased police patrols because it was an entertainment district and there would be- police patrols because it was an entertainment district and there would be higher activity. So recently, we've had a little bit of an uptick in some crime in that area along Stockton Street and also at the Meeting House. And so there was some emails that went around and they contacted the Police Department. And I guess we got a response from the Police Department that said Providence was considered a private area and that it didn't, it wasn't the same as the entertainment district down here because there was a lot of public property down here. And so it'd be more like Bridge Street. And so that the police are not responsible for coming out if there's any type of underage drinking, or conflicts, or excessive drinking, or anything else like that. And that wasn't our understanding. So I guess we're, you know, I'm very concerned about that. The Homeowners Association got together and came up with an estimate. They told us that we could have private security for $200 a year for each house in Providence. And that really wasn't what we understood that we were signing up for. We're also concerned that with the food trucks there for 2:00 a.m., it's going to impact a lot of the small business owners that are in that area because, you know, they're there with, you know, when you've got, you know, Mo's and Mellow Mushroom and Phuket and, you know, Grill 29, some of these different places, when you put food trucks down there, you're going to be taking business away from them. So I'm kind of concerned about that. And so I guess that's what I would like to find out. If there, it's not going to be increased police protection, then not only am I not for increasing the amount of activity we have down there, I mean, I'd like to take a look in not having it as an entertainment district if we're not going to have that type of protection. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. This committee will discuss, after the public hearings, the commission will discuss those concerns. Yes, ma'am? Oh. I think the lady on the left was, were you?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Dorothy Houston. I live at 24 Cranston Street in Village of Providence. My husband and I moved there approximately two and a half years ago, and it was our plan to retire there. Our home is currently on the market for sale. On this past 4th of July, we went up to Bird Museum for a picnic, outdoor-in-the-park kind of event. And when we returned home, we could not get on our street to get to our driveway to get in because of the traffic. And people from all around the county, the city, everywhere, have been invited by media, by radio announcements, TV announcements, to come to the Village of Providence for the fireworks show. There's also an entertainment district there, an open park where there's movie night and that kind of thing. Those things are good. Many of us moved there because we could walk to Phuket's or Mo's or Grill 29 for dinner with our children, grandchildren, after work, weekends, and evenings. But if it's a place, if it's becoming a place like Bridge Street for anyone and everyone to come, there's not going to be any way to control the crime, the volume of people who come. If there are, on our street, cars parked on each side of the street, you cannot get through. So there's no way to get in or out. That's how narrow our street is. And many times, if you want to go out, you have to go another way to turn around to get to where you're trying to go. And so I just can't really imagine that we are going to allow street vendors and food trucks and things like that in a place where people have bought with the intention to retire and enjoy the parks and the green space and the things that were promoted to us when we purchased our homes there. I am against food trucks and facilities that bring heavy utility trucks and vehicles into the neighborhood to service businesses and that sort of thing, where they have to come through residential streets where we have to live and walk and where our children have to play and grandchildren from day to day.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Juanita Stewart. I live at 4 Battery Street. And I opposed also to this. It seems like the entertainment district started out as something that we could live with. It's not something we got a lot of information about at the beginning. We were willing to try it. And it seems like it has been a slippery slope that quickly has evolved into something much larger. The security concerns that have been voiced are concerning that $200 that's been proposed by the HOA seems to me like a tax just to live in that neighborhood. We've been there three years. We love our neighborhood. We love our neighbors. We love the idea and the concept. But it seems like it's taken a turn into something that we did not buy into when we moved there. It's also concerning to me about, I guess, the vagueness of the planning document that we saw. Assisted living facilities are aging in place. And what exactly could that be? We talk about what it is now, but in five, 10 years, if we stay there, what will it be then? What could it evolve to? And who has the power to decide that? There's talks of carnivals that was written in there. When will that be? Who decides what carnivals or special events are acceptable? And the HOA, as far as neighbors, we do not have a lot of voice in our HOA. So we have to rely on the town founders to make those decisions for us. And sometimes, we don't feel like that's always in our best interest or even taking our opinions or comments into what we think is best for us. It tends to seem it's what's best for them. And I think that we have a lot of people that have a lot of investment, as you heard before, trying to get into their streets or whatever, to their homes and to their driveways. And we don't have a lot of say sometimes into what goes on. But we are very happy with the way things are. And it's the fear, I guess, of where this might turn in the future without any voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
I'm short. I'm Elizabeth Wills. I live at 22 Hope Street in the Village of Providence. My family's objection is more to the language in the rezoning document that lists assisted living, aging-in-place, maybe skilled nursing homes. But what it says is including but not limited to. And that language is very slippery to me. I don't care for that at all. If it were aging-in-place, if it were skilled nursing facility, or just a nursing home, I would have no objection. But in the state of Alabama, other assisted living facilities include lots of other things that I really am not willing to have in my neighborhood if I have a voice and a say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
No, you can go ahead. You go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'll choose. I'll choose. We'll have ladies first.
Hi, good evening. My name is Angela Somerset. I appeared here in June in reference to our neighborhood with the HOA, et cetera. And I feel that there have been some improvements. And unfortunately, I don't want to see improvements go forward and then go backwards. One of my major issues is security. I'm a physician. I come in at all hours of the night. One of my issues is the fact that why should we, as a community, have to pay for the security of what the businesses are going to profit for? And I would think that with our councilmen, as well as with our builders and developers, that those things would already be set within the ordinance or the entertainment ordinance. So again, for me, it's always about foresight, not having to act retroactively after we've let the horses out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, David Slimon, 60 Ledge View, developer of Providence. I think there's some misunderstanding with respect to the biggest part of the rezoning had to do with the food truck question. And I think we need to clarify that that is on private property in the town center. The areas that were referenced, I think by Mr. Stewart, I think, are already developed and would not be private property where you could actually have a food truck because there's a house sitting on there. And we didn't adopt the language that, you know, the 2:00 a.m., that's a city ordinance that planning chose to, you know, I guess, ditto what was going on in the rest of the city. I guess for, you know, public consumption, I don't think there would be any food trucks at 2:00 a.m. because I really don't think there'd be any customers. And they don't operate without people buying food. But we would be willing, if somebody wanted to reduce that time, because it really doesn't. We're only looking at it as a special event time. And we would work with our neighborhood retailers on coming up with a food truck event that would complement what they're doing. We're not looking to do anything to hamper the town center. And with respect to assisted living, we don't have any specific plans. We've had several residents ask us to incorporate assisted living into the village because it's a natural progression with respect to the folks that are living in there. In fact, about two months ago, I had a lady call me crying because they had to sell their home because her husband was, had to go into assisted living and she didn't want to leave the neighborhood. So that's kind of why all of this came about. And with respect to the definition that the Planning Department has, I think, that again, and Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong, comes out of the current city code. So we really, as developers, didn't come up with the language. And we're not trying to be vague or anything else. But we would want to do something that would complement the residents of the Village of Providence. And with respect to the entertainment district and, you know, issues that happen at the Meeting House, the pool, they really are non-related to the entertainment district, but people want to correlate them because, I guess, it's easy. We've had an issue with, you know, people coming into the swimming area, as most communities do. You've got teenagers and other people from neighborhoods around that do that. And it really isn't part of this rezoning request. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slimon. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Summerf- Somerset.
Somerset, that's okay.
Somerset.
Well, first of all, I want to say that we appreciate, as a community, you know, what the Slimans are saying. But trust is earned, it's not given. And it takes time. And I think before, now, I can't speak for everyone in Providence, and I apologize, I live at Nine Chalkstones, so I do live in Providence. But I think that in order to get some of the things that we want, we have to first handle some of the problems that we already have. And it feels to me, and seems to me, that every time we have a problem, we're taxed for it. We understand that businesses want to grow. I understand that developers want to make money. That's fine. We just want to protect our investment as well. I work hard in my yard. I love my home. My neighbors know me. I am very visible. And I don't expect them to trust me blindly. But it is in the character of who I am and what they see. And that's what's most important. And that's something that's going to take time. Because we still have some issues that we need to really resolve within Providence.
Can I respond?
Thank you. Yes, but I want to be very careful. And I think that you should, I want to be very careful about this not becoming.
Sure. Well, I just wanted to reply. I heard a $200 kind of thing come up. And I monitor kind of the HOA board, as it be. And a resident asked what we could do if we wanted to hire private security. And the HOA management company came up with, well, if the residents want to choose to do such, this is what it would be. So it wasn't something that the HOA put out there and said, hey, we're going to tax the neighborhood. And, you know, a lot of these are issues with, you know, within the neighborhood HOA that really have nothing to do with, you know, the zoning request.
I think that that is something that we're going to, this body is going to want to ask you more questions about as we get into the discussion and maybe our member who also is a policeman about what the actual issues are with the city police being called to the So, you know, I know you plan to stay around. And I hope that all of you who are interested in this will stay around too in case we have some additional questions for you. Is there anyone else, Ms. Reed?
I don't live in Providence, but I live in everybody's neighborhood in the city of Huntsville. So put me down, it's Providence tonight, okay? I'm here, I'm concerned, and I care about the citizens. I don't care whose neighborhood he's in. But when I read right here, and I wouldn't give you this, I don't live within 500 feet, but I do have this. The City Huntsville Planning Commission holds a public hearing tonight at Providence Plan Development, approved by the City Council, City of Huntsville. Providence Plan Development. You know, that's a big subject right there. There should have been public hearings in these council chambers with these public and these people and these officials before it ever got to this department right here. There's too many issues out here. And too much, too much is going on that's not knowing what's going on. When he says assisted living, but he can't define everything that's going on. In these neighborhoods, when they bring this in here, every stitch of that land needs to be itemized and defined as what's going in there. I don't see how you can sit up there and vote on guesswork. And that's what this is all about. These developers come in here and leave the public blindsided. I'm saying, and trucks, mobile trucks, entertainment centers, come over here in Huntsville and see what's going on. Alcohol running up and down the streets, people going on to 2:00 o'clock in the morning. We love all this in this city. That's what they love. But if that's a private out there, and I guarantee you, the food trucks, the health department does not have enough help to go to these food trucks that's running around all over these cities. And to me, I went to a meeting the other night, and two big developers were sitting up there. All I heard was Smart Zone. They want to turn this whole city and all of that into what they can do what they want to and leave the public out. Now, that's coming in this city from your officials. You won't have an input. These developers are going to do what they want to. I was at the meeting, and that's coming. It's not on there tonight. But that's what's happening right here tonight. You do what you want to. When they pass this, the council, it needs to go back to the council and there'd be some public hearings before you all ever say yes, no, or no. I'm holding you responsible and accountable. But the people that gets elected, that's where the people vote. They need to ask all these questions to those people and the mayor sitting up there at that council chambers. That's where this needs to go. Thank you for letting me live in Providence tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, for your comments. And I would say that this is our public hearing. This is a forum, not just for the people from Providence who all had private notice, but also for people who don't actually live on those streets like you. This is a time for that public hearing. And I have a question for our legal department now. This is under the zoning item, and this goes to, this goes to City Council, doesn't it? As a zoning change?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
It was a major change to the plan, so it would have to go to the City Council.
So assuming that this commission forwards it to the Planning Commission as is, there will be another public hearing on it. So when, to just put aside those fears for a moment, this is not done in private. There will be this public hearing and one more on this, at which time anybody from the city can come and comment, as you can tonight. Is there someone else, anyone else to speak regarding, yes?
I just wanted to make two points of clarification real quick. The transect plan that you see here, none of the transects are being changed in, as far as area or location tonight. I was just showing you where the transects are, so I wanted to make that clear. Also, as far as the entertainment district, which has been adopted for Providence, that has to do with the sale and consumption of alcohol and where you can consume that alcohol. And there are hours associated with the serving of that alcohol. That is a separate ordinance and does not apply to what you see before you tonight as far as the hours go. Mobile food vending units are not allowed to sell alcohol. So the hours that you see for the mobile food vending units are not affected by the entertainment district hours and vice versa.
All alcohol sales would be from an approved facility that is operating under the guidelines and laws of the state of Alabama and the city of Huntsville. Is that correct?
That's correct. But there was, there's a difference in the hours for the entertainment district and the hours for the street vendors and mobile food vendors. And I just wanted you to be aware of that, that they're two separate ordinances.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Leto. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Uh, is, is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding Providence Plan Development? I would caution you all to, to remain in the room even though the public hearing on this will be closed because we're finished with all the speakers. Stay in the room for the discussion of, by the Planning Commission. Hearing, no further comment. The public hearing on Providence Plan Development Amendment is closed. Uh, I'd like to diverge from our agenda for just a minute to recognize the students from Alabama A&amp;M Urban Planning Department who are here viewing tonight. If you're, if you're here with Alabama A&amp;M, would you please stand up? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you ver, thank you very much. Um, these, these students are visiting with us today and they have spent time earlier today with our planning director, Michelle Jordan, who's, who's spoken to them, well, yeah, earlier today, Ms. Jordan spoke to them. And last week, our former planning director, Marie Bostick, spoke to them. We're glad to have these future planners with us today and we, we're looking forward to working with you in the future as professional planners. Um, and now back to our agenda. The public hearings are over and our next item of business is subdivisions. Kimberly, would you give us a subdivision committee report?
Yes, ma'am. The subdivision committee met on September 17th, 2014, following our, our, our recommendations. The first item, Arbor at, Arbor's at Rivers Landing Apartments. This is presented for boundary plat. Approval on 348 lots, 48 units, move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item, Elbert Rutter Subdivision, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Uh, okay. Do I hear a second?
Is it in order?
It's, it's in order, okay. Did, was there a second on that? I missed. Okay. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item, Heritage Estates Phase Two. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 44 lots. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fourth item, Inspiration on Green Mountain Phase Three. A re-subdivision of Track 34 and Lot 10 of Inspiration on Green Mountain. A re-subdivision of Track One, Green Mountain Auction Property. And a re-subdivision of Track 40 of Inspiration Phase Two. A re-subdivision of Track 35 and Lot 19 of Inspiration on Green Mountain. And re-sub, and a re-subdivision of Track One, Green Mountain Auction Property. This is presented for final approval on 36 lots.
Uh, is it in order?
Yes, sidewalks, landscape, and improvements to be installed by October 23rd, 2015.
Okay, do I hear, did I hear a second on motion?
Uh, move to approve.
Okay. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fifth item, McMullen Cove, Braywick Phase Three. This is presented for final approval on 22 lots.
Uh, Jim, is that in order?
Yes, with sidewalks to be installed on September 17th, 2016, and improvements to be installed by September 17th, 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sixth item, Mill Run at Hampton Cove. Re-subdivision of Lot Four of Sunbelt North and a re-subdivision of Track A-5 of Hampton Cove Subdivision, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots one and two. The angle of side lot lines between lots one and two. Uh, move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seventh item, Nature's Cove, Phase One, formerly Nature's Trail. Uh, this is presented for final approval on 63 lots.
Uh, is it in order?
It's in order with sidewalks, landscape, and improvements to be installed September 17th, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eighth item, Nature's Cove, Phase Three, formerly Nature's Trail. The committee recommends preliminary approval on 18 lots. Move to approve.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ninth item, Old Cobblestone Subdivision, Phase Four. This is presented for final approval on 12 lots.
Is it in order for final?
It's in order with sidewalks, landscape, and improvements to be installed September 5th, 2015.
Move to approve.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Tenth item, Olive Chase. A re-subdivision of lots one and two of McComb Acres and a re-subdivision of Lot Six of a re-subdivision of Lot Four of a re-subdivision of Lot Three of McComb Acres. This was forwarded without a recommendation pending further consideration of the waiver requests. Uh, move to approve with the modification and the waiver.
Uh, is the waiver request, that's, that's for the sidewalks? So this is one, we're open for discussion. This is regarding the five-foot sidewalks instead of the existing four-foot sidewalks.
Madam Chair, um, I, there was a second, correct? I'm sorry.
I, was there a second?
I think you did.
Okay.
My question is, if the sidewalks are presently in place, can, can the additional space just be added to the current sidewalk without having to tear out all of that?
It could.
Has that been considered as an option?
Let, let me ask a question to that Jim. It could, but aesthetically.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so there would be, it, it wouldn't, what you mean to say is it wouldn't blend with, it would be hard to make it blend?
In my opinion, I think what Jim's saying is it looked like we added six inches to both sides of a sidewalk or one foot to a sidewalk. It's not going to look very good, no. I don't think this body wants to do that, no.
Peggy?
No, I was.
I, I have a question for the engineer. Did I hear that the cost of this was like $18,000 for 410 feet of sidewalk? Could you speak to how that cost is, is arrived? How do you arrive at that cost?
Madam Chair, so, again, so that I'm clear, these improvements on the sidewalk are, are sparked because of the change of the development of these six lots, correct?
Uh, yes, because this is a new development, but, uh, there's, there is a specific, are you giving us that, Michael?
Subdivision right there.
Uh-huh, that, that authorizes.
There's two statues.
Okay.
So because this is, is considered an improvement?
It is an improvement, mhm. Okay, now which item are we to look at? Okay. Pedestrian walkways not less than five feet wide, all of which shall be constructed with concrete, shall be required across blocks where deemed essential to provide circulation or access to schools, playgrounds, shopping center, transportation, and other community facilities. Such walkways, along with sufficient right-of-way for maintenance purposes, shall be dedicated to the city for public use. That's, um, item, Article Four. Um, I guess that's Article 4.2, Section Four. Any further discussion? Kelly?
I'm extremely empathetic. This sounds like this is your first development and I realize that this, this is an additional cost. But the, the one thing that the city has done is we've moved forward. We've, we've upgraded our codes and regulations that we realize the five-foot sidewalk is necessary. And when you come in and you develop, these are our rules and regulations. I know, Mr. Harrison, you said, you asked us not to distinct, to do, to distinguish this between other and other developments that we consider. And it's extremely important, though, that we consider these equally. If we make an exception here, then we may, need to make an exception for all other new developments. There's no real hardship here. The sidewalk itself looks to be in terrible shape. And I do think that this cost would be absorbed in the cost I would assume that you would pass along. It's the cost of doing businesses to the lots that you would sell. Hopefully, I think the cost would come in far under the, the amount that you have projected. But I do think that it, it's incumbent upon us as a commission to honor our codes and regulations. This is the direction we're going and this is how you, you, you move forward. We want these five-foot sidewalks across the city. This is going to be a very public area and the other sidewalks will upgrade and, as, as the other areas continue to develop and redevelop.
Thank you. Kelly? Any further, just, any further discussion?
I think many of us are balancing the understanding of where the city is headed with the application of where the city is headed in particular developments. Um, we are essentially asking a developer to increase their sidewalk size that will not be applicable before or after where it's increased. And there's an element of common sense and practicality that I think we're missing here. Um, I understand that we don't want to open up the floodgates and make it seem like every developer will get a pass for this, but it just seems like, um, we are asking them to prepare for the potential for a, a site that hasn't completely been well-understood or completed in regards to planning. Uh, but it just seems like, okay, this would make a lot more sense to me if I knew the city was coming in right behind this to finish up the job. Essentially, it could be five or 10 years before the rest of the sidewalks or rest of the access points are updated to reflect the five-feet sidewalks. And, um, that to me is a bit perplexing. I'm, I'm trying to balance, you know, moving forward as a city and applying these codes with application and, and being practical. But that's just my comments.
Any further comment?
Let's have one other question. Uh, the existing sidewalks and, I actually have two questions, I guess. Existing sidewalks, are they going to be improved, any whatsoever? Are they just going to be left the way they are when you do the redevelopment? They're going to be left the way they are. Second question, are we putting utilities, utilities above ground still? But. Right, and I guess my question is just for clarification. Is the city is not requiring or has not asked you to put the utilities underground? They will be? Okay. Okay.
Uh, may I get a little further clarification on that? Now, these, these poles that I see close to the sidewalk, uh, those look like they're supplying other areas than, than your, so the only underground utilities will be within the lots that are on your cul, on the new lots on the cul-de-sac. So you really won't be doing anything to these poles except coming down all five of them to access the power. Is that right? And, and you also have a fire hydrant there that, that the sidewalk goes around? Um, that would probably be hard to move because of the, with the water lines that serve it. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify the motion so everybody understands what's happening. Um, the motion was to approve it with the waiver. So in order for anything else to happen, someone would have to amend the motion to make it five feet and approve it that way. But actually, it couldn't be approved because we'd have to go back because this plat wouldn't be reflecting the five feet. So we, we either have to approve it with the waiver or deny it outright and it goes back to subdivision, if I understood that correctly.
Okay. Okay, so, so this will go back to committee then with a new plat rather than just a modification of the motion?
If, if it's denied, yes.
If we're denied.
Just looking at the Article Four, it, it clearly states exactly that it's supposed to be five-foot sidewalks. But we're not really here to debate whether it should be a four-foot or five-foot. We already have it in writing of what it should be. So if the waiver says that we have to send it back, then I'd say we probably need to look at sending it back.
Any further comment?
Do you have that document? There was something else presented to us at the subdivision committee meeting that specified that the sidewalks had to be a certain foot based on the type of roadway it was. Do, does anybody have that with them? There was some discussion on that. Is it in here?
No, this is not. It's section, I think you referred to Section 4.6.
Is it 4.6?
Section two, table.
Would you, uh, would, if you're, okay.
Yeah, there was a, yeah.
Uh.
But there was a table that went.
We have it, I, I was just, you can't, your, your comments can't be picked up. If you were to make a comment from the audience, you have to go to one of the microphones because we, we can't hear you. But she has it now, so.
Yeah, that one.
Okay. Michelle, since you have that, would you read that aloud to us? I, I mean, Kimberly, I'm sorry.
What I'm referencing is there was some discussion in the subdivision committee regarding the type of road and whether or not this was required based on the type of road. And I'm trying to understand how this table applies to what we're talking about. Um, it specifies that for a local road or marginal access road, which is, or a minor collector, which is what I think this road was labeled as. I can't remember what it was labeled as. It was a local road, that it's only required to have four foot wide. And then on the major collectors, when it goes up to five foot wide and so on for arterial. And so what I'm trying to understand is, okay, I see that this says it only has to be four foot, which would be in compliance with the current way it's designed, the way it is right now. But then we have these improvements that say, okay, we really want it to be five feet. Are we contradicting ourselves or, I mean, I understand the precedent, but I, I mean.
Would you, could you, I think that authorizes the, the one you're talking about, authorizes the, um, Planning Commission to choose to make sidewalks wider where, where they deem that it's necessary. That was what I understood, but I didn't hear that in what you were reading.
There is the other part that says the Planning Commission may require in order to facilitate pedestrian access from roads to schools, parks, playgrounds, or other neighbor, nearby roads, perpetual unobstructed easements at at least 10 feet and with easement shall be indicated on the plat. And then the following page in this book has this table of sidewalks required. And on a local street, it says four feet. So it's, four feet is requiring and it just seems like we're requesting for the developer to do more than that under the auspices that we'll have another type of facility coming into that area, but without any modifications or improvements to the sidewalks around it.
Madam Chair.
If I may speak to that, is that out of order in that regard? Is that a question?
Uh, wait just a moment.
I would like for planning staff to clarify what is exactly required in this case so that we can all be on the same page about what, what their actual regs say. that we can all be on the same page about what, what their actual regs say.
Kim is correct, it's on the chart.
Michael, uh, we're not picking you up for the...
Kim was correct on the, uh, on the chart. Local streets are required to be four foot, uh, but in this case, we're going with that provision in, in four point two and four point six, where we're asking them to be increased to five foot because of the future civic area right adjacent to it. So all local streets are, are four foot. When you get into collectors, they get up to five foot. When you get into Septad Streets, which are the street tree streets, they're five foot. And when you get around schools and, and civic areas, we ask for five foot also.
Question, so are we saying this is based on future, not right now as it exists?
Right, yeah, right now.
I believe it's based on the Grissom campus.
Grissom High School is operating there now and it will be, uh, redesigned into some community buildings. You know, what they are, we don't know exactly, but, um, uh, do we?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh. But it definitely addresses other community facilities than schools.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
If these developers were not building a development and everything was going on at Grissom High School, would we or the city go in and change these sidewalks to five feet on our own if this development was not occurring?
Madam Chair, as I understand it from council, is that the improvement document is, supersedes the subdivision regulation that's requiring us to extend the street, uh, beyond the required four feet to five feet?
The improvement document supersedes subdivision?
The improvement document?
Yeah, I...
Madam Chairman, just a point of clarification, where there's a more specific provision that would apply to a set of circumstances, it would apply over the more general. So to the extent the, there's, it meets that essential requirement and that applies more specifically does, than does the general chart or the other provision, you apply the more specific over the general.
This looks more specific than this.
Um, I, I would, um, I would say that one thing we should consider is that, that in many instances where development is occurring in a new area, a sidewalk will be built on the property that is being newly developed. Uh, according to the city regulations, that sidewalk will be built and it may be years before something develops to connect that sidewalk to, to something else. It may just be a sidewalk, but, but in order to have continuity in the, in the, um, developments, we have to put those, we have to start somewhere. And I'm not sure that with this particular one, um, when that's going to be a, an area for some new types of development because of the moving of, um, of Grissom School and, and thereby some new community involvement, that, that the city, I'm not certain that the city won't want to go out there and improve those sidewalks, uh, that are already existing other than this one. Is there any further comment? Yes?
Janet, uh, from a practical standpoint, there are no currently that I can find five-foot wide sidewalks in South Huntsville. And if, if you know where any are, so this is obviously where we're moving and I understand that, but, um, you know, Grissom's been there for a number of years and a lot of kids have walked up and down sidewalks and everything that's on, um, Bailey Cove and Carlton Jones and, uh, Weatherly and, and, and the street this neighborhood is on is four foot wide. And on this street, uh, it's four foot wide going around utility poles. So, uh, somewhere down the road, somebody's going to have to, if it's going to be five foot, there's going to be a lot of concrete work done somewhere down the road. And so it would seem to me that, you know, all these folks are doing is opening a street onto the existing street and putting a neighborhood in behind it that's six lots. Um, so it seems to me at this point, making them tear out a four-foot wall to put in a five-foot wall, which will probably be the only one anywhere near the property or the existing Grissom, that that's, that's asking a lot.
Any other comments?
I have one more comment. I think it's clear that our regulations require for new developments, uh, some type of sidewalk. In this case, we've required a specific sidewalk due to a specific use. Um, the cost of a concrete sidewalk, I believe, is much le- for this length of sidewalk is much less than $18,000. Um, so I think we should consider all of those things. We, we definitely need to enforce our own regulations.
I'm sorry, didn't hear the last thing.
I just said, I definitely think we need to enforce our own regulations.
Any other comments?
Madam Chairman, may I, may I respond to a prior question?
Yes.
With regard, I, I believe the, the section in question that, that is trying to be applied here is Section four point two, uh, subcomponent four, I believe it is the requirement that you read shortly before. I, I would note that this appears under the subsection blocks, uh, as opposed to the general table as it was referred to for, which appears under the sidewalk section. Uh, block section, I, I don't see a definition for blocks, uh, but it does say within that sub-four, uh, that it shall be required across blocks where the, of course, uh, nearby use is contemplated or presently used. Uh, if this five-foot requirement is required, it would not extend across an entire block as I would define it, but again, I don't see a definition of block in here. Uh, so I, I, I do want to draw that distinction, if I may.
Uh, usually, and I don't have a copy of the entire, um, zoning ordinance in front of me, but the definitions are usually in another section and I don't know whether it defines block in that section or not. Do you, Michael? The definitions section?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Uh, but I would assume that it does if there's a specific, uh, article with regard to blocks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to call a question.
Okay. We have, uh, we have a call for the question and, uh, I don't think a call for the question requires a second. Somebody might refresh me on Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, but I would entertain a second if we had one. Okay. Okay. All in favor of, and this will cut off discussion if we, if we, uh, at this point, if we vote for the call of the question. All in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the question is called and, uh, Kim, would you read us the motion again?
Motion is to approve with the modification and waiver as stated.
Okay. Uh, the motion, I'll, I'll reread it. Uh, I, actually, I'll let Kimberly, you made the motion, I'll...
Uh, the motion was to mo- uh, to approve, uh, with the modifications and waivers as stated.
Uh, and, and we already had that seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the motion is approved, uh, with the waiver. Okay. Our next, let's see, Lisa, uh, Kimberly, was that your last, that was your last item, wasn't it?
It was the back.
Oh, okay, you have another.
With subdivision?
There's always more, okay. Would you proceed?
Uh, the eleventh item is Overton Subdivision. The committee recommends layout approval on 105 lots, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelfth item is Providence Place Apartment Phase Two. The committee recommends layout and preliminary, and preliminary on 90 units, move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thirteenth item, Walnut Cove Face, uh, Walnut Cove Two, Phase Two at Lake Forest. This is presented for final approval on 28 lots.
Is it in order, Jim?
Yes, it's in order. Landscapes to be installed nine, nine, 2015, and sidewalks and imperatives to be installed nine, nine, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any, uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fourteen, Watercrest Phase Two A, re-subdivision of Watercrest Phase Two B and a re-subdivi- and a re-subdivision of parcel three of Watercrest Phase Two A Minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the non-perpendicular lot line between lots A and B and the angle of the side lot line between lots A and B. Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, it is.
Move to approve.
Uh, okay, we have motion and it's... All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to location, character, and extent, the first item is Space Sculptors Trail, uh, 2014. This was presented for a public hearing, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm on the board of the Arts Council and need to recuse from this issue.
Okay, you're accused if you make that.
Madam Chair, as do I.
And Gary is recused. We still have a quorum, so, well, we'll proceed with vote. All in favor, please, I, I'm sorry, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item, Huntsville High School Freshman Academy, Phase Three C signs, uh, presented, uh, public hearing was held, move to approve.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Huntsville Hospital Utility Bridge Phase Two, uh, public hearing was held, move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, moving on to vacation of right-of-way. Uh, request to vacate right-of-way along Cecil Ashburn Drive Legacy at Jones Farm. Document number 2010829000571100. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of said vacation. Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, Vince, would you, would you do our zoning committee recommendations?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item one, Sanctuary Cove Four, rezoning, 1417. A public hearing was held. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two, Heritage Zoning, 1418. A public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three, Providence Plan Development, 0211, amendment, major change to the Providence Plan Development, PDH LUI 56, adds permitted uses within the plan development. A public hearing was held.
Do you hear motion? Do you hear second?
Second.
Okay, the floor is open for discussion. Yes.
All right, Madam Chairman, as it relates to some of the, as it relates to some of the issues that were, uh, brought up in reference to the police department as a response, uh, to the area of Providence, um, Providence is a part of the city of Huntsville and we do answer calls for service in that community. Uh, in reference to the entertainment district that is in Providence, it's my understanding that Providence is more of a, a private property entertainment district. Um, they fall under the guidelines of business re- requesting part-time officers, the same as we do in downtown. If a business in downtown wants extra police service, they have to hire, uh, extra-duty officers for that police service. However, we do assign officers to the, uh, zone in which Providence, uh, is located. So extra officers are patrolling in that particular area, uh, during all shifts. Um, so there is police presence in the Village of Providence. But as far as, uh, it, in its entertainment districts such as Movies in the Park, we do not provide, um, police service for that. Um, Mr. Slime and the board, they pay an officer to do security, uh, for Movies in the Park and other venues that occur in the Village of Providence. Uh, if other businesses want extra police service, they would have to hire an extra-duty officer. But again, to, to reiterate, um, the Huntsville Police Department does respond to the Village of Providence for calls of service, um, should a, a citizen request our response. So does anybody have any, any further questions in, in reference to that, that, so that I can clear the air on, um, any issues?
Thank you, Jim. Um, any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am chair, I wanted to see if there was any leeway at, at all as the developer mentioned earlier in comments, and I believe, uh, some of the public did as well on altering any of the verbiage, any words in the narrative of our current ordinance as it's stated. Is there any way to change the, um, permitted uses or the type of uses, uh, in, in any shape or form from what is currently, uh, on the books here in our city ordinance?
Uh, Lisa, would you answer that question? Can you answer that question for us? Or Jeff? I mean, Jim.
Yeah, as I know.
Audience, somebody.
Anybody, come on in.
Madam Chairman, if there's a change in what has been presented, it would need to go back to committee for further consideration.
Yeah, I think his, I think his question is if it's sent back to committee, uh, would it be possible or does it have to follow the verbiage and the current city ordinance regarding those things? Okay. Thank you.
To, to follow up on that question, uh, one of the concerns I heard was food trucks in front of someone's house till 2:00 a.m. Could, if this was sent back to committee or to planning, could the revision to an ordinance, uh, to change that time even though it's in the entertainment district ordinance, could this ordinance override what's been adopted in the entertainment district?
Yeah, again, the entertainment district doesn't affect, um...
I understand that, but...
This ordinance, and the area the gentleman was talking about is not within the entertainment district. And another point is that the food trucks cannot be located within public rights of way. They have to be on private property. Um, so they, food trucks could not park on the street in front of someone's house.
Could you bring that, uh, that map up you had, uh, earlier? I want to clarify something. The section appeared at the top, top right, right there. Is that considered entertainment district?
No, it's not.
Okay, what is that area considered?
Their entertainment district is within their downtown district.
Okay.
Um, along Providence Main Street, Parade Street.
So no food trucks are currently allowed in that area?
Well, they would be allowed in this area if there were private property available for them, but it's developed and the food trucks cannot be on the public rights of way.
So they can pull, they can pull into the park.
They can't park on the public rights of way. That's right.
What, what is on that red area now?
Their homes, I believe, or, no, not in the red area.
Okay, in the red area, is that just grassy area?
Yeah, red is homes and then, and then it's a rectangle courtyard park in the middle.
Okay.
With, with the, with the narrow street that goes four ways around.
Yeah, so...
So could you zoom in on that area?
David, is that, um, what, that's a grassy area?
Yeah, there's a grassy area park that's owned by the association, the homeowners association, and then there's townhomes and homes that surround that park.
Okay.
And there would not, uh, be, and we have to approve, uh, as part of, you know, any food truck venues, we have to approve it and it has to be on private property. And I wouldn't see a food truck pulling in somebody's front yard there because there wouldn't be enough room. As Lisa said, they can't park on the street, so it would really be a mute point with respect to that worry. That's what I was trying to address earlier.
Madam Chair.
So that, that particular area would not accommodate?
No, ma'am.
Food trucks now or in the future?
That's correct.
Due to its configuration?
That is correct.
Its, its existing configuration. Yes, so, some, someone had a question, yes.
Yeah, but...
It is. It is.
It's private, it's private property, so, so food trucks would be allowed there. Is that correct?
Not, not on that little park area that's between the houses.
But he just, we, we, you just heard the developer say that the HOA has to make, they can make the decision if they will allow food trucks there, but we're, it's zoned to be able to do that, is that correct?
That would be civic, that would be civic area under our zoning and they're not allowed in a civic area.
Uh, can you clarify what's considered private and what's considered public looking at this?
Yeah, the streets are public streets, so the food trucks would not be permitted on the public streets. The rest of the area is private, just as in any other subdivision. The transect five that you see here, transect five C is currently, as Mr. Slime stated, developed as homes and townhomes. And then the, the park area here is transect C and food, food trucks are not permitted in the civic districts, so they would not be befriended in that park.
Okay.
Really and truly, the, a house would have to be taken down to allow a food truck to be in there and that owner would have to allow that to happen and I just really don't see it as a possibility.
So help clarify, what's the, what leverage or what permitted uses are we creating by changing the zoning if it's not for the food trucks? What is it for?
Well, it's for all transect five and, and it goes back to the way a planned development is, is created. It's, has many zoning districts, if you will. Each transect is a, a small zoning district and transect five, um, from the time of when planned, when Providence was created in 2002, um, they've had the transects, transects one, three, four, five, and six, and transect five and six were then and continue to be their commercial districts.
And that just happens to be an area that was contemplated for live work units, uh, by the master planner and said that that could happen. That's why that was zoned T5 originally and it just turned out that, you know, townhomes and houses were put in place there.
I, I want to address this question to Mr. Slime and it's similar to the same question that Kimberly asked, um, before. What do you want the change in the zoning for? What, what are your plans for the change in the zoning?
The plan would be in the commercial district, which has T5 and T6 towards the town center area, uh, to allow the potential for a food truck event.
Okay, so the whole premise of all this is that you want food trucks?
No, no, that's, it's one, that's one piece of the change. There's several, since 2002, several things have happened within the city with respect to mixed-use developments such as Providence. Linden, for instance, has many of the same uses that, uh, staff is updating with respect to the village of Providence. So it's nothing outside of an ordinary mixed-use development in the city of Huntsville and Lisa can, you know, staff can correct me if I'm.
I, I think what I, the, the main concerns of, of the residents that live in your, um, areas that they want to know exactly, okay, you, you told me one is food trucks. So what, what are the other things that you?
They're, they're all listed in the, uh, in the, I don't have them in front of me. Assisted living is, uh, one of the areas that was, you know, the, the two questions that came about with respect to emails to our office had to do with assisted living and the language thereabout. And that assisted living, as I explained before, came about when several residents asked us, hey, we need to consider putting an assisted living product, uh, in the village because that's natural progression. And so that's something that we are considering and we don't have anything, uh, nor do we have any plans, but we want the ability to be able to do that. And I don't have the list of all of the other, uh, items that are being updated, but.
So basically, all the, all the items that are in the, um, that are permitted in the zoning is something that you may look forward to in the future?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Uh, Ms., yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, we're.
Sorry.
We, our public hearing is closed, so I can't do that. The only reason that Mr. Slime is allowed to talk is for clarification, um, at this point, that, to, to ask him questions that we need clarification for. Is there any, Steve?
I'll be recusing myself since I build there and am a property owner.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself also because I've been engaged with Mr. Slime on business.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Yes.
Yes, uh, as, as he brought up, is there a possibility to send it back to, uh, maybe tighten up some of the, uh, possible uses before we vote on it?
Yeah, and, and I, my understanding is we have a motion, uh, on the floor for approval. If we wanted to send it back to, to tighten up some of the, uh, things that are allowed, uh, then we would need to vote down that motion. Am I correct? No? Oh, okay. We don't have a motion to send it back. We have a motion on the floor already. Okay. Okay. Yes, we can amend the motion. Uh, okay, you made the motion and. Okay, so that was a motion to? To send it back to committee for, for further, um, review. Okay, um, we.
Move on, if you would allow the good doctor to share her comments with staff so that we can incorporate them, um, as we go through forward with this process for the next meeting.
I, I, I will be glad for her to share them with staff, but, but since the public hearing's closed, I, I would prefer that she do that outside the public hearing. Okay, outside, outside the chamber, maybe by, by calling tomorrow. And, um, uh, if you call Ms. Leto tomorrow, she can make note of, of things she probably already has, but, um, uh, so, so that she, you can get those in for consideration.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I need to recuse, I've, I've been engaged with business with Mr. Slime as well.
Okay, so we have three recusals and, uh, I think we still have a quorum, right?
Yes.
We need six, okay. Okay, we have a, a motion to send it back to, uh, committee for, um, for considering the modification. A planning department will, will take into considerations the things that we've discussed tonight and, and try to incorporate those in a way that, that works with the community and, and also works with, uh, the, the needs of the developer, uh, as to continuing development here under that motion. Any further discussion on the motion to, to return it to, uh, committee? All in favor of returning the, um, Providence Plan Development Amendment to, uh, committee for further, uh, review, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And hopefully we'll see that up on next month's agenda with, um, with suitable modifications.
All right. Thank you. Item four Farley Two, rezoning. Item fourteen nineteen, the committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for October 28th.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five Mill Run rezoning. Item fourteen twenty, the committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for October 28th.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six NTI rezoning, fourteen twenty-one, the committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for October 28th.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Our next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Jim, would you tell us about this?
We recommend, we recommend invocation of items one through five. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. And I would remind you that, um, that next month we elect officers and, um, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. You're welcome.